Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
For a second. Please vote. Motion passed. Consent agenda. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passed. May 2021 monthly financial reports. Good evening. Balances to report this month. Fund One, 20 million. Fund Two is at 491,000. Fund Three is at 9.2 million and Fund Four is at 1.6 million, negative 1.6 million. We still have not gotten SR Two funds. Should be the next couple of weeks is what we're hearing. And then SR Three, we'd originally heard next year, could potentially be even the following, but that is still anticipated that we will get it. Balances are looking good, remaining steady from month to month. We're obviously starting to look at how we're going to finish the year and starting working on next year's budget, but no concerns to report. Any questions? Thank you. Pirate Pride Special Olympics.
Good evening. I would like to introduce our student athletes, if you guys want to come on up, and Ms. Thatcher. So we're here tonight to recognize our student athletes who participated in the Special Olympics on April 17th. Their coach, Sherri Thatcher, couldn't be here tonight. Teri Williams, Sherri Thatcher. Teri Williams couldn't be here tonight, but Sherri's here as a stand-in. And we've got our athletes here and Sherri's going to walk through our winners. So we brought home 12 gold medals, 12 silver medals, and eight bronze medals. And because the award ceremony was impacted by COVID, we were able to celebrate our athletes before they went off to their Special Olympics and then also when they came back to get their awards. So it was kind of a cool thing to see that on both sides. So I'm going to let Teri walk through it.
Hi, guys. I'm going to take this down so y'all can understand me a little bit better. All these kiddos participated in Special Olympics of Missouri. And it is a program that enables kids that are age eight and all the way through adulthood. So it's something they can participate in their entire lives. And it gives them the opportunity to do a sport that they don't normally get to participate in because of their disabilities or their delays. So I'm going to start with, I'll introduce the kiddos and tell you what they did here. We'll start with Tucker Bryant. Come here, Tucker. Tucker got two bronze medals in the 50-meter and the softball throw.
My name is Tucker.
This is Tucker. And what grade are you in, Tucker?
I am freshman.
Freshman, okay. So he's at the high school this year. Thank you, Tucker. What about Jewel? Come here, sweetheart. All right, this is Jewel Ashbaugh. And she got two silvers and a gold medal. She did the 50-meter run, long jump, and softball throw. Do you want to tell them what grade you're in, Jewel? Six? Six? Seven? Sixth? Sixth grade, okay. Good job. All right, Chase. Come on up, buddy. You want to say hi to everybody?
Hi, my name is Chase.
And tell them what grade you're in, Chase.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade, all right. Chase had a gold in the 50-meter and a silver in the long jump. So he's one of our middle school athletes. Okay, let's see. Tommy, come on up, buddy. Come up here and say hi. And tell them what grade you're in.
I'm in eighth grade.
All right. And Tommy had two silvers. He had one in 50-meter run and one in the long jump. Great job, bud.
Now go back.
Okay. Tyler Rich, come on up, sweetheart. Tell them what grade you're in.
Seventh.
Seventh grade. All right, Tyler, he had two gold medals, one in 50-meter and one in the long jump, and then a silver in the softball throw, right?
I think so.
Good job. Way to go. All right, Hamid, come here. Can you tell them what grade you're in?
Please, sir. Please, sir. I'm fourth grade. I'm tenth grade. I'm fourth and tenth grade. I'm still good to tenth grade.
Good job. Fourth grade, and he had a bronze in the 50-meter and a silver in the long jump. And then we have Grayson David. Come on up, Grayson. Oh, not Ayla yet, hold on. Actually, let's do Ayla. Come here, you're already up here. Ayla, they can't even see you. Come over here to this side. Tell them what grade you're in, Ayla.
I am second grade.
She's in second grade. And Ayla had two gold medals in the 50-meter and the softball throw and a bronze in the long jump. Nice job, Ayla. Okay, Grayson? Grayson, can you tell them what grade you're in?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade. And Grayson had a silver in the 50-meter and a bronze in softball throw and long jump. Good job. And then I think Antonio, come on up, buddy. Antonio, can you tell them what grade you're in?
Fifth.
Fifth grade. Good job, bud. We had two golds, one in the 50-meter. You want to come to this side so they can see you a little bit better? 50-meter run and the long jump were gold and silver for the softball throw. Congratulations, buddy. And Jackson? Come over here to this side so they can see you. Can you tell them what grade you were in?
Fourth grade.
He's in fourth grade. And he had three gold medals, 50-meter run, softball throw, and the long jump. Nice job, bud. Because you'll notice that all of their shirts, they all are wearing shirts that are donated to them from the student council at the high school, donates the money and buys the shirts for them every year for their shirts. And Hannah Kaiser's graphic design class is the one who always does the designs for the shirts. And this student out of her class this year that actually made this year's design was Presley Perkins. So congratulations to all you guys. You did a great job.
Good job to all of you. All right, so Tommy, you can put the back behind this.
Can we do masks off? Can they do masks off?
You guys can take your masks off.
Take your masks off, guys, for the picture.
Show them smiles. Big smiles. Good job, guys. Good job, guys. Okay, shiver me timber, staff recognition.
Good evening. I'm going to take my mask off so you can hear me here. So I have the pleasure tonight to recognize the lady to my left, Sarah Poole, for results orientation. So Sarah has been fantastic in the past two years. We made a big office switch, a big organizational switch, two years ago. Five of us switched roles. Sarah was in a different role, switched roles. The Hitchcock, who is sitting there, wave V to my right, and Jeff and I all switched roles to make things work. Sarah's in a role where she works very closely with business services. And I recommended Sarah, but I know that also from business service standpoint, Angie's team, what she does with finances, purchasing, human resources in this building, she just keeps it rolling and keeps it where everything is on time, everything is done. She looks at every piece of information to make sure it's accurate. She just does an amazing job. And so because of that, it helps our budget, it helps us be more efficient, and honestly, we have done much better at those things. Now, in a pandemic, you also need that support to work through different things. We've had different purchases. And Sarah's been very, Sarah helps give me another lens on things to help me look and make the right purchase and use the right codes and do things honestly that make Angie and her team very happy. So it makes us happy. In the end, the teachers are happier, they get things quicker, faster, and then the students get things quicker and faster, too. So I want to thank Sarah for all the work she's done the past two years in her role, three years at our organization, but the past two in the role she's in, to be focused on results orientation. Couldn't have said it better, though. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Platte County R3 2021 staff retirees.
Just making a public announcement. As you can see, there's a collective 300 years of service and some names on that list that have become synonymous in a lot of ways with the school district. And so we'll miss them very much. We had a great opportunity to celebrate their service to the district. And a reception was a great time. And so we're very happy for them. They will be missed, we'll fill their positions, but they can't be replaced. But another big group and again, 300 years of service to the school district.
Thank you. Public hearings and presentations to the board. A person wishing to address an item on the agenda must complete a request form. Vicki, do we have any forms for this evening?
We do have a request form from Mike Metusick. Mike here? Mike, I'll put up a speaker queue here in a moment. You will have five minutes. And your label will appear and it will be green, yellow, and then red when that five minutes has passed.
Okay. Where am I looking for a green light?
And go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mike Metusick. My son is actually a student here. And a couple of quick shout-outs real quick. Ms. T. Sue Thomas is a great teacher. Thank you to Kelly Woods for putting up with me all year. And I apologize to Coach Wilson, because my son still calls him Coach Wilson. I picked up my son from Y Club today and he ran out and was still wearing a mask, which I think is just totally absurd. I'm not anti-mask, I'm anti-mask mandate. And I think there's a big difference. When he got his yearbook the other week, I was looking around in it and it just was insanity. I can't shake my head enough at all the pictures I had to look at of my son wearing a mask all year, his kindergarten year, first year in school. We've put up with it long enough. I'm just ready to be done with it, and I hope the school board will make that decision tonight. I've been quiet. I'm not going to be quiet anymore if this charade or whatever it is keeps up. Let kids be kids. That's all I'm asking here. I realize there's a liability concern, and there always has been, but that's an issue no matter what the school district does. And I just asked the school board to end this as quick as possible. My son's enrolled in summer school, but I'm going to pull him if we have to keep this up. I'm not going to send him and put him through this anymore. I'm just totally sick of it. And I also want to thank quickly Dr. Reich, Dr. Harris, and of course Buffy Smith for something they helped me out on dealing with the Y Club on a negligence issue earlier this year. So I'm also told that the board members can't react while I'm speaking, so I'm going to try to embarrass someone, knowing that she can't say anything right now. But I want to thank Buffy Smith. Buffy Smith is a leader, and I think if you look up common sense in a dictionary, you probably find her picture next to it. So we need more people like her on the board. And I can't speak highly enough of everything she does on behalf of not only everybody here, but students as well. So Buffy, thank you. I hope this mask mandate ends immediately. It's absurd. My son can do all kinds of stuff right now without a mask. And anybody that goes outside realizes that nobody's wearing them anyways. And the fact that we have to wear one here is just a shame. And I just shake my head at it all. Hope you guys make the right decision and end this silliness now. So thank you very much, Buffy. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Written communications received by board members. I think there were a couple of thank you cards going around this evening. Hit both sides yet, but... Construction and renovation projects update.
Good evening, board, and thank you. I'm going to turn this over here to Matt St. Louis. Matt is the project manager for Newkirk Novak, who is the construction manager on the high school project. Matt will provide a quick update on what we've done to date, what we have scheduled to do over the next 30 days, and he'll do this monthly. We will also start doing this for the middle school project here in the near future as well, as they get further along in their process. Before Matt starts, I'll also say that we plan next month to come back to the board and bring the design, the current design of our high school and where we are with the middle school, to share that with you as well, so you can see the progress related to the design of those facilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Harris. We have the slides up or no?
Is it PDF?
No, that's okay.
You have a copy of this in your documents.
Well, it's been a good month since the groundbreaking. We've done some work. It doesn't feel like it's enough, but man, we're queued up for some good work coming up. We've got the Evergy primary work. We're working to remove the lines that wrap around the baseball field. It's a good, healthy effort that takes a lot of work. And I was talking to Mr. Brown before the meeting. Evergy's been great to work with. This has been something, six months in the planning, and they are hitting it on the day. Our contractors are hitting it by the day, working around the raindrops. I think everybody knows that we've had some, we've got a power outage scheduled for Saturday, and you guys, appreciate you all working with us on that. What we're trying to do is get ready for the fall semester. And there's a ton of infrastructure that has to go in with utility works and grading. And getting those lines down is just a huge hurdle that hopefully here in the next two weeks, we'll see those lines coming down. We've got site clearing going on. Demolition of the baseball field and concessions is going on today. We took the concession stand down. We've got site fencing and mobilization. We've got a contractor there putting in the sanitary main down by the apartments there on the north end. Behind the scenes, we've sent out all of the contracts for Package One. We're working heavy on procurement, getting items here so that we don't delay the superintendent, Chris, out there working, getting him plenty of runway to where he can just hit full speed as quick as we can. We're working on Package Two VE, trying to keep this thing where it needs to be. And we're daily, we're working with trade partners on scheduling, trying to find an aggressive path to get us in and out. Over the next month, what you can expect to see would be, the clearing would continue. We've got a grinder on site now that you put whole trees in and it spits out mulch. It's pretty cool if you haven't seen it. It'll be there for a few more days. The primary work will finish here over the next 30 days. The lines will be down. The utility sanitary work and storm work will be underway. The sanitary will be finished. We'll have the basement dug and the baseball field will be well underway. We'll also go out to bid for Package Two, and we'll continue to work on shop drawings and procurement. You'll see a lot going on over the next 30 days, and after that, it just gets even better. So I'll open it up to any questions you have.
Make it stop raining.
Yeah.
I have one question. Over there by Seagres, there is a truck parked over there. As the car line goes through, it makes the big circle, and as they exit, there was a truck there this morning. And it's kind of a TP that can exit and enter those cars and stuff. I don't think anybody would have a damn problem if you just put that truck on the sidewalk.
Okay, we'll look at it. Yeah, thank you.
Other than that, I mean, hey. You rock, go ahead.
Thank you. Anything else?
I don't think so. I look forward to next month and seeing the...
Yeah, it's going to be fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution authorizing the structure, marketing, and sale of Platte County R3 general obligation bonds approved by voters at the April 6, 2021 election.
Yeah, the title says it all, so I'm going to let Joe Kinder and Steve Wilk talk you through this.
Hey, folks, it's good to see you. Just wanted to take a minute to tell you congratulations and lay out what the next month will look like and talk to you a little bit about the structure of the bond issue now that you've gotten it passed and you're ready to move on. So really quickly, we'll be, over the next month and have been over the past month or so, working on drafting documents with your special tax counsel, Gilmore and Bell, working on putting together information. Basically, to sell your bonds off, our job is to take that $73 million and break it up into $5,000 increments and sell it off to the investors willing to pay the highest price, which for you all means the lowest yield. And one of the things we do is prepare a bunch of documents. You're regulated by three federal regulatory agencies, but you actually will have an official statement that looks a lot like a stock prospectus that will be put together. Your administration will get grilled by Standard and Poor's to get a credit rating. That is, that credit rating is much like when you go out to borrow money for a home loan. It's like getting an actual credit score on the school district. And we anticipate that you'll get that AA rating again, which is just two notches down from the highest rating that you can achieve. To put that in a little bit of perspective, there's probably not more than 20 school districts that would have a rating above, well, less than 10 that would have a rating above the AA plus. No more than 20 would have your rating or higher. And the vast majority of the school districts, there's only one on the west side of the state, and that's Lee Summit Schools, that has $2.5 billion of assessed value. And a lot of that rating score is based on your local wealth. The rest of it is based on your management, the job you're all doing, and the job the administration does to carry out your goals and objectives. And the rest would be over in the St. Louis area, and they would again have over two, over three, over four billion dollars of assessed value. So their local wealth would be very high. So from a management score and some of those things that you all are going to get, you're going to rank with the top tier of the state. So we'll be working on getting that rating. One of the things we've evaluated is there's an additional program called the Missouri Direct Deposit Program, which is called an enhancement rating. It's not technically the rating on your bonds, but it can help you a little bit in terms of your yield. But one of the things you give up is your money that you're going to use to pay the bonds, your tax money that comes in, actually never touches your bank account. You actually have your state aid transmittals come in and those get intercepted. So 10 months out of the year, you don't have money sitting in your local account. That does a couple of things. Number one, over the life of those bonds, the benefit that you get is very minimal upfront. But the cost of not having that money, you know, $5, $6, $7 million a year sitting in your local account for 10 months is severe. I mean, it's going to cost you upwards of $400,000, $500,000 to participate in the program for when you include the benefit upfront. So we want to make sure that we're taken care of and looking after every dollar. And the biggest thing for you especially, when you're looking at bonding capacity, is money in your bank account counts dollar for dollar towards bonding capacity. So that half a million dollars, we can legitimately say, is going to save you or increase your bonding capacity, half a million dollars, which is helpful, obviously, as you continue to grow. So we'll be doing some of those things, getting ready, getting the marketing prepared and the resolution, as Dr. Reich pointed out, is pretty self-explanatory. This just authorizes you. We want you to be able to have a chance to talk to us. I want to talk to you a little bit about the structure, but really, you're authorizing us to move forward. You're not authorizing the final sale, you're not authorizing the results. We will be back next month with those for you to look at, but we want to make sure that you have a chance just to hear everything before you see the final deal next month. The other thing I want to talk a little bit about is structure. You know, you all have done a great job in preparing for this. I know this was a long time coming. It's a huge bond issue, and it's going to be great for your community and your school. One of the things that you have done is aggressively pay down your debt. If you remember, one of the ways we got the bonding capacity that you have is you paid down debt over a couple different times, you know, did some refundings to save some money. But here recently, you paid down about $4 million worth of debt, saved yourself and taxpayers of the district $800,000 over the life of what was remaining on those bonds, and then increased your bonding capacity moving forward. So again, you know, you just continue to do great work, and that's something that's really important and valuable when you're looking at doing this for bonding capacity, but also for your cash flows. One of the things you want to do is be able to do a no-tax increase bond issue, not have to raise taxes to your patrons. And that's part of what you've done leading up to this. And then the other part is, we're going to structure these bonds and look at your outstanding general obligation debt as one, what we call one common plan of finance. So you have current debt outstanding that you're amortizing, quite a bit of principal, about, what is it, $35 million, I think, over the next seven or eight years that you're going to pay off that you already have outstanding. So if we look at a graph of your payments, your payments start out kind of up here, and they'll slowly trickle down over the next 10 years. So what we're going to do, nine years, eight years now, this is 2021. What we're going to do is the vast majority of your principal is going to sit after the principal that you're paying on now. And what that allows us to do is, again, is to maximize your tax dollars upfront and allow you to do that no-tax increase bond issue. So when I come back next month and show you the bond issue, you're going to see bonds starting in about 2027, 2028. And that's by design so that you can make sure that you have the cash flows to not have to raise taxes in the beginning of your actual issue or over the life of your issue, and that hopefully you can continue to address your needs on a no-tax increase basis as you move forward. So those are really the biggest things that I wanted to cover, and hopefully we'll be back next month with great rates. I mean, it's a tremendous market right now. You know, people keep talking about inflation, but we're not anticipating that that's going to hit us anytime soon. And we've got lots of money flowing in to investor bond funds to make sure we get the lowest yields for you.
Any questions?
Bring us back, great news next month.
We will do our best. Thanks, folks.
Also highlighted, what a great job you've done managing this.
Thank you. To be fair, Angie plays a heavy factor in this, and then we, you know, we're a collaborative partner with Steifel, and they've done a good job guiding us in that direction. So we've been able to take care of some debt ahead of schedule, and that's been good.
All right, is there a motion to approve this as submitted?
Moved. Second.
Please vote. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Good to see you.
Thank you. Communication strategies.
Yeah, I asked, just in...
Yeah, I asked, ju- just in general, kind of an update on where we are on mitigation strategies. I made this info action in the event the board wanted to take action, primarily on face coverings. But before you do, I wanna make sure that you have all the information that we have and, and then you can determine where you wanna go with that. So if that'll turn it over to Dr. Beattell.
Okay, my role is to give you an update on all of the current recommendations, the entities that recommend, and then there is an outstanding current federal order regarding masking. So the ripple effect of where we are now started last Thursday evening, I think I was sitting home on my couch, when the CDC changed their recommendation for masking, allowing for folks who have been fully vaccinated to remove masks indoors and with others who have been fully vaccinated. They had a clarification on Saturday to that recommendation stating that they were still recommending schools and healthcare facilities maintain full masking even with those folks who have been vaccinated. Ripple effect to that, the Platte County Health Department rescinded their masking order, but still reminded schools that they'd like for us to follow the Department of Health and Senior Services and the Department of Elementary and Secondary recommendations related to masking. Those recommendations were revised today and they still state that they, they're suggesting full masking in schools regardless of vaccination status. There is a federal order from the CDC regarding masking in all public transportation and our school buses qualify as public transportation. So I wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, that regardless of where things shake out this evening, that order is still in place. Jay's gonna go through our mitigation strategies and then we'll see what questions that you have. Our numbers have continued to trend downward. You know, we participate in a monthly call with THSS and DESI and we obviously attribute the downward trend to a lot of different things, but our mitigation strategies are a part of that.
Thank you, Dr. Beattell. So I'm gonna just share a few things regarding our mitigation plan. So you're pretty familiar that we started this year with a pretty lengthy document that really outlined our strategies for approaching this school year. It was certainly based on the condition of the pandemic at the time. It was based on our collaboration with the Health Department and looking at our recommendations from CDC and from DESI as well. And then throughout the years, we've had these ongoing conversations, we've made some adjustments to those plans. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a quick update on the strategies that we intend on continuing that were in that plan, the strategies that we've actually made some adjustments to based on the, the current status of our, of the feedback from our local guidance, and then things that need to be discussed and considered. So I'm gonna kind of put them in those three categories. We certainly intend on continuing the hand hygiene and continuing that approach to that emphasis in schools and in providing the hand sanitizer and just keeping a strong emphasis on hand hygiene. We intend on continuing the indoor air quality improvements, air filtering, the increased ventilation, the, the increased filtering of, of the units, of our HVAC units, continuing that work to provide high quality indoor air quality. Now, we've made some adjustments on a number of strategies. You may have seen the communication that went out fairly recently that said now outdoor recess and outdoor PE can go without wearing a mask. Students can take their mask off anytime they're in the middle of an activity where there's physical exertion required. We made that adjustment in our plans recently. We've also moved from no visitors, no outside visitors to limited visitors. So things that we're allowing people to come in for speaking, to be able to speak to a class, anything that's related to instruction and enhancing learning, we've opened that up now. So early in the year, we started no visitors, now we moved to limited visitors and then still having the visitors follow our protocol. We also have opened up field trips and student internships and started doing some of those as long as they're following the protocols that, of the location that they're going. We've allowed that to increase throughout the year. Plexiglas, we're continuing to keep those in high volume areas, but not requiring them in all classrooms. So we, we've made some adjustments to our classroom setup in that regard. The distancing, social distancing, we really moved from, you know, we started the year with trying to get, you know, six feet to the greatest extent we could. We then switched to DESI's recommendation, which was three feet, but all along, it's really to the greatest extent that we can get that. We know there's some classroom that you just can't even get three feet between every student. But we've made that adjustment and we provided opportunities for teachers to set up their classroom, getting the greatest amount of distancing that they can, and certainly then when students are up and moving, having, having the mask on. We've moved away from the need to share supplies, so we're not having to emphasize that as much. Those are adjustments we've made to the current plan. Now, the, the big things we have to decide on our position on, on face coverings and masks. We're gonna have to have that decision related to graduation. Graduation is, this, this weekend. Music performances, you know, we've, we've made some adjustments to that recently when we had small groups and we could spread them out, we've allowed them to perform without their mask. We'll have more of that. We have the performance at graduation by our, our vocal group as well. How we finish the last four days of this school year, how we start summer school, and then moving into next fall. I will say that our intent is to bring back in the, at the July board meeting, our recommendations for how we intend on starting next fall, and again, looking at the information we have at that time on our current guidance from the local authorities. So we also need to then also consider our contact tracing and quarantine measures and the, the decisions we make will have an impact on our contact tracing. And so I'm gonna have Dr. Beattell talk about that and then we'll turn over to Dr. Reich to continue this discussion.
So just a reminder of where we are with contact tracing. Under our current level of masking, which is requesting that all folks be fully masked over the nose, under the chin, we're able to quarantine kids and staff that have been exposed within the building as long as everyone is appropriately masked. So what that means is we have them coded in our sheet as pink, they're on watch, which means that they're technically quarantined, but they're allowed to participate in school and school-based activities as long as they maintain their mask. Just something to consider with a change in our level of masking, we would need to have a change in how we are, how we quarantine. We would revert back to the fourteen day quarantines regardless of whether one person was masked and the other one wasn't. So the only way we get to that in, in school quarantine, which as we've discussed in cabinet is kind of difficult to, to think about, that's when both parties, your positive person and your exposed person are both appropriately masked. So we'll turn it over to you all and see what questions you have.
You wanna talk, I know this is fresh, but the Health Department is giving us some different direction on contact tracing.
I would love to talk about that. So beginning with summer school, we will be stepping out of that middle zone that we've been in where we've conducted our contact tracing in-house and shared that information with the Health Department. We'll be stepping out of that game and instead I'll serve as the point for letting folks know at the Health Department, as we have, we're obligated to let them know when we have a positive, but they will complete the contact tracing process. So.
That's good though, right?
Yeah.
For me, it's amazing.
That's a good thing. How will they know which, who?
So they'll know the same way that we've been, we've been applying the process. I, when there's a positive, in the beginning of the pandemic, it was me, then it was my nurse Laura and I, then we brought on a contact tracer and slowly we've shifted this over to our principals, most of whom are over here, JT, Mr. Middleton, I talked to all these people, and we ask a series of questions. This is the person who is positive, who's around that person. We coordinated with teachers. Instead of us doing that interview process, the Health Department will take that up. Yep. And we've all been trained in the same way, so, but our contact tracer position was a limited time position, so that's kinda how that's gonna more.
And with numbers low, that's probably doable. If numbers were to go up or we see a spike in, in numbers because of a variant or something like that, the Health Department wouldn't have the resources to do it, so it's probably an ongoing discussion. But for now, we're happy to get out of that business and turn it back over to the Health Department, but wanna make sure that you are aware of that change as well.
Yes, that occurred today. So we're, we're still involved, our staff is still involved, but we will be more of the intermediary. And so the phone calls for, for quarantine will come from the Health Department rather than from our administrators or myself or my staff. That doesn't take effect, you guys, till, till summer school. So, and during summer school, we have administrators that are not our usual administrators, so that would have been a big training component that we would have had to have, have done to get them up to speed in that process. So this is a good, a good opportunity for us. Okay?
You mentioned the return to like having visitors and field trips. I mean, how much return to pre-pandemic or, you know, what's the difference?
Yeah, it certainly hasn't been returned to the pre-pandemic mode that we were in. You know, it's, we understand, especially with student internships and the need to get out there and have those experiences. We had some, you know, AP courses that had some requirements on attending universities and getting that experience, it was part of the program. We, and we've gone through and really every time there's an opportunity, we assess it, we see what the, what the condition of the pandemic is at that time, and then also where they're going and what the guidance and the protocols are for that, for that entity or, or that community. So we've kinda on a case by case started to open that back up. NCC, for example, has got a number of kids that, that have student internship, so, you know, that's, I wouldn't say certainly back to pre-pandemic, but you know, we've, we've opened it up some.
So right now, I believe Smithville just moved to go mask optional. Blue Springs, Green Valley, Oak Grove, Lee Summit. To my knowledge, Lee Summit is the only one that is optional in their buildings, but required on their buses. I think that's everybody I can think of.
We do anticipate word with the CDC and our contacts at Children's Mercy, the CDC is working on some new guidance and the CDC is the entity that issued that federal order related to transportation. We do anticipate that. One thing to keep in mind is that the CDC is on the east coast and what they consider summer and what we consider summer is a little bit different. But that's a piece to think about.
I wasn't aware that already made any changes. I was anticipating that they might, but.
A lot of kids are getting vaccinated too as well right now, so more and more people are.
There are opportunities in Platte County, correct?
Yes.
Twelve to fifteen year olds.
Yep, CBS, Walmart, yep. There hasn't been enough demand for the Health Department to continue their mass vaccination site. That's one of the reasons they're able to squeeze into that contact tracing component, but yes. And we've received a lot of questions related to vaccination of, of kids, if we're gonna require that, if we're not gonna require that, pros and cons, and we refer folks to their pediatrician.
So how is Smithville allowing, how are they allowing bus ridership without a mask if it's a violation of? Okay, just, you don't have to answer that. For them, my assumption is it's probably difficult to administer masking differences in different environments. I mean, personally, we've got some administrators in the audience here, but you know, telling kids that you can and you can remove them in the classroom, but you can on the bus and the likelihood of there being some compliance issues that may have led to their decision, but I don't, I don't know.
But I understood correctly, CDC says we have to on a bus, at least today.
I think was their decision made prior to that maybe? That might be the reason for the difference?
The order.
The federal orders from February. The, the issue with the order is that in the, in the actual verbiage of the order, it says bus, it says public transportation, it never says school bus. And the FAQs related to the, the federal order, it explicitly, there's a question, do you mean school buses? Yes, we mean school buses. Anything that is not a private vehicle counts. And they actually, hot off the press, latest DESI guidance, they actually have this coded for things that are new and that's not coded as new, but it's worded completely differently than it was worded before. So I, I, I'm not sure everyone knows that. So I, I'm not sure anybody's defying an order as much as maybe they're not aware that it's out there.
Any further questions?
So what's on the table?
Yeah, what's on the table, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, some people need to make a motion for whatever it is that you would like to do with regard to face coverings and then Vicki will record that motion. We did not write the motion for you because we didn't know whether you would move forward with action or, or not.
So do we need to, do we need to say something about graduation as well or is that covered already? I think if you.
It would just cover all of school.
We should make a motion to just say, hey, from now after today, let's make that mask optional to the public.
I think the parents can decide.
Let the parents decide for their kids what the best for them and just, we're gonna live with it. I mean, it's just the way it is. I mean, I'm tired of the federal government telling us what we can and can't do, so let's put it down to the parents and adults to make this decision and we'll just run with that.
You don't need to take action on the graduation because we, we are intending to follow Hy-Vee's policies and their policies are, masks are, they're, they're following the Kansas City order, which is, which is optional.
It's optional, yes.
Hy-Vee is optional, yes. Yeah.
I like the optional word.
Me too.
Because then you're not saying no masks.
Yeah. It's optional. Everybody makes a choice. Yeah. Make your choice, it's best for you and your family.
Right.
Well, when we communicate, we'll, if, if, if it's the board's pleasure to make go mask optional.
It's your choice.
We will also articulate that there are some regulatory agencies that recommend that you wear a mask. We will make that statement so that people are aware, along with the optional statement.
So did somebody make the motion?
So I would say that it is recommended the Board of Education make face coverings optional at.
In school. School and school activities, school functions, how do you say that?
In school and, uh, school functions.
You could just leave it an optional, just make it optional. If there's a desire to do it on, to, to.
On district property?
Effective immediately, no, not on district property, because we're not always on district property when we're doing events and activities.
If we're gonna do something different on buses, that needs to be part of the motion. If we're not, if, if we're not, then it doesn't.
I think you still do it optional.
I'd make it optional on the buses too.
Well, there, that's a different ruling though, so that's not truly up to us.
Technically, it's a federal order.
Yeah, so we are following the federal orders as we have throughout this process, making it optional, except with the exception of school buses.
So they make that optional with the exception of school buses.
As long as everybody's comfortable with it.
Of being on the school bus. Yes.
As long, gosh. If, if the CDC changes, we wanna be able to change also. So do we wanna stay consistent with pending CDC advice?
What if they change, who knows what they change to?
Yeah.
I would suggest a special board meeting to change.
Yeah, I agree.
We have, our next, our next collaboration with DHSS and DESI is the first Wednesday of the month, which will be the second, which is before summer school begins, just so you know the timing of, of pieces. And at this point in time, we're maintaining our Health Department meetings weekly on Thursdays. So.
So if anything changes, you'll know on June second with the federal.
With the federal, we'll know when the CDC announces it. They're very, they're very timely with those pieces. So, yeah.
So if the CDC changes or the federal changes, then we can have. A meeting. A meeting to change ours. But we have to follow there. I feel bad for the bus drivers though.
So if I say except on school buses where masks are required?
Per federal mandate, per, per federal.
Per CDC guidance. CDC order.
It's a federal order.
Federal order, yes.
So I have it as recommended the Board of Education make masks optional at school functions, except on school buses where masks are required per federal order.
Yes.
Does it need to say effective?
Effective immediately.
Immediately. The motion is it is recommended the Board of Education make masks optional at school functions, except on school buses where masks are required per federal order effectively, effective immediately.
And I would suggest, as Dr. Reich said in the communication, as it's said in most of these communications, what the recommendations are, but there is no order. That is simply an option and a recommendation.
With that, with that recommendation, does someone make a motion?
Yes, you want to read it one more time just so that somebody can move, move on that?
It is recommended the Board of Education make masks optional at school functions, except on school buses where masks are required per federal order effective immediately.
Should we say during the school day, that's a school function, that tells me it's best for the students? He can, that would.
I mean, music programs or anything would be optional as well, right? I mean.
Any school activities can be optional.
Any activity.
If it's a school function.
Anything.
Yeah. It's a choir concert, it's a baseball game.
Right.
Read it again, Vicky.
Okay.
Classroom.
It is recommended the Board of Education make masks optional at school functions, except on school buses where masks are required per federal order effective immediately.
Should we say at school and school?
In school buildings or at school functions.
In school buildings. Or at school and school functions. So that they know it's the school day too, not just the extracurricular. I see what you're saying.
So I have optional in school buildings and at school functions.
That sounds right.
Or just in school because recess is outside and.
Yeah, but we want them to know that.
Well, this is in school buildings.
In school facilities?
At school facilities instead of buildings.
In school facilities.
At school facilities.
Properties, that's indoors, outdoors, everything.
At school.
No more masks, period.
Yes. Let me read this again.
Okay.
It is recommended the Board of Education make masks optional in school buildings and at school functions, except on school buses where masks are required per federal order effective immediately.
It's fine with that.
Yeah.
I think we've made our intent clear for the discussion.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
So you're making this mask optional for everyone.
Yeah.
Except for buses. For simple.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
A move, we proceed with the.
I second.
Should it be stated?
Stated, yes.
Second.
Please vote. Motion passed.
Woo-hoo!
Okay, District Committee Task Force Overview, Board Member Assignments for 2021, 2022. So I think you'll see an attachment of the current assignments and in yellow where someone is definitely needed, but I think movement is welcome or additions on some of these are welcome. I believe we are missing definitely Karen and Bobby from the list. And then anyone else who wishes to move or leave a committee. Does anyone have any thoughts on committees they'd like to serve on, not serve on? I know we definitely have the opening on the District Calendar and School Health Advisory Committees. Karen, would you be interested or Bobby?
Well, that's up to you, Buffy. Do you want me on there? I'll do anything. I took a year off.
You would do what? I'm so sorry, I have even trouble getting over there.
He said he would do anything.
I'd do whatever Buffy, it just depends on if you want me there.
It's up to you guys, would you, are you interested?
Um, I wouldn't mind doing the diversity if anybody wants to fall off of that.
Okay, how many do we have?
There's three on there right now.
Three, so we would need to.
I could back off of that one. I missed, I missed the last two meetings.
Which ones is this?
The diversity.
So put Karen in for Alicia on.
And then I could do Calendar.
And then put Alicia in for Amy on Calendar.
Got it. So then we have Shek.
That leaves the Student Health Advisory Committee without a member. Bobby, does that interest you?
Sure. Dr. Butel.
Or anyone else?
Guide me in the right way.
And does anyone else have any desire to change? All right.
I'll make those changes and then send the message. I'll, I'll do the final, I think, next month, just so everyone can look at it.
Okay.
Hey Buffy?
Yes.
I'd be interested in the NCC. That's a lot of the VOTEC stuff there. I, I really would be interested in some of that, but you're on it.
I think Gary and I are on it.
Yeah.
I don't have any interest at this time in leaving.
I don't either, but I, I can do whatever.
Can we have three or is it just two? I guess that would be up to Brian.
And Northland Career Center. I, I can give it up next year.
Oh, Gary said you would give it up next year?
Yeah.
Next year, okay. Can we plan for that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right.
So when we do this next year, Bobby?
We'll have to speak up if that's what we want.
I think Brian still doesn't know what I was yelling at his name for. Uh, okay, Transportation Monitoring System, Monitoring System.
So before you, you have an agenda item that is a recommendation for a transportation monitoring system. This is a system that has been budgeted for next fiscal year. So it'd be something that we would do over the summer if it's approved and officially be in place for the next school year. The Transportation Monitoring System is an upgrade to our cameras on all, on our school buses. It actually increases the number of cameras and, and much higher quality than what we have now. It actually provides real-time GPS and the ability for a parent to even track where their bus, for their, the bus for their child, where it's at, at a given location and the time that it stops at their stop. So it has that capability as well as student tracking as well. So if we decided to implement a, a plan where as students enter the bus, they'd be recorded that they actually entered and at what time and what time they, they got off the bus. So there's some opportunities with that with this system. This system actually integrates with our student routing, our bus routing system as well. JT is here tonight too, so if you have any more specific detailed questions about how it works, I told him to, to tag along and there he is, he's right here close by. To be, be here in case you have any. We sent this out, we were seeking bids, we got four bidders to respond. You can see from the recommendation, JT and his team did a really good analysis and are recommending Transportant is the name of the company. It's a one-time cost of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-nine cents. And it's a twenty-seven thousand dollar annual maintenance to this, to maintain this system. I will tell you that we also have a transportation supplement grant from DUC that would pay for a little over sixty-four thousand of this for the, the one-time, for the first year fee. So we are getting a little over sixty-four thousand of this one-time fee covered in a transportation supplemental grant through DUC. So with that, entertain any questions? Certainly JT would be happy to answer if you have any specific questions on how the system works.
How does it track individuals? Do they badge in as they go with like a student ID?
Yeah, RFID.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The one we have, actually, I won't take too much time, but we have two ways that we can do that. There will be RFID cards, something like this, that they will have to swipe. But our adults have trouble keeping these, so you can imagine what the kids are going to be doing. So they will also come up with, at each of their stops, the students that are supposed to be getting on a stop, their names are coming in, the driver will be able, on the tablet that's right there, be able to punch that number or punch the, the name of the student and it will log them on. And that's anytime they get on and then it will also count them when they get off. Just one clarification by what he said about the parents being able to track. They can only track where the bus is within a geo, what they call a geo fence. So they, they set up an area around their stop where their student would be getting off and that's the only place they could see that. And so if they couldn't see where, you know, what's going on with the bus at some far-off stop. So it's, it's come down. And we will have the wifi and we would have the capability if we so choose to allow the wifi for the students on the bus. That would be particularly good for some of the students that are on trips, the after-school activity, that sort of thing. So they could do their homework. So that would be an advantage I guess, so. And the, the IT team would, would be able to throttle it down to where they, we could restrict it just as they do here with, on the campus, so they can't get the sites they shouldn't be getting to and that sort of thing. And the best thing that I'm excited about, I spend every time I have to look at a video, it takes me about two hours. This, I can actually see real-time. And this, this is, is a, a device that like they have in Liberty. And you can actually see, there's one of the cameras points out the side, the, out the windshield. And you see what's going on, I can see what's going, actually happening in, at the time, inside the bus as they're going down the road. Accidents, you can see if there's somebody that is hurt, get first responders quicker, all sorts of things. I will have a, a dashboard sort that will show all the buses on their routes, what they're doing, their speed. I can track everything, even see if they have an, an engine malfunction. So it's pretty cool, pretty exciting.
So you'd be the, so you'd be, so if there was an emergency on the bus, you would know that right away?
Uh, yes, well, assuming there's, there's two ways that'll happen. One, the, the bus driver will have a button they can push and it will let me know. But we will also have a monitor up on, on many of them that we'll be able to see. So we would know. And it's, it's, it's a panic button if you, if that's the best way to call it, that they could hit. We have panic buttons on the bus now, but all it does is marks on the video what happened there. And, and my, my GPS is, is passing.
And you'll have video surveillance.
Exactly. Big brother.
So if you know who gets on and you know who gets off, we should net zero every day.
I'm sorry? That's the, that's the plan.
We won't have anyone left on the bus.
Have we not been doing that?
They hope we don't do that now.
I know, but there have been instances, just not with us.
There's, uh, we occasionally do, and even with the cameras, I can't know that I do it. We have had some students that lay down, even down on the floor, sleeping. And that's one of the reasons why we had the end of the route, the driver walks it, makes sure that they're sleeping. And now we have, on the newer buses, it's had a child check and the bus driver has to go back next to hit the button. That's supposedly to force them to do their job. At least we, we occasionally.
So we appreciate your consideration of the bid that's before you.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve, approve the bid as submitted?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passed. Thank you. And Jake?
Student Services Key Process Update.
Good evening. Uh, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Uh, if you don't know, if you don't know me by now, my name is Chad Sayer. I am the Director of Student Services for, I had the opportunity to do this great job. Uh, with me tonight is going to be our Athletic Director for Platte County High School in the PCR3 School District, Mr. Gabe Middleton. So we're going to do a little tag teaming here real quick. Uh, but I wanted to start off with a couple of things, just first of all, to give you. Getting this. All right. To give you an overview of my presentation tonight, really, I want to explain a little bit about the Department of Student Services, our goals, our missions and what we're going to do, and then explain a little bit about some of the work inside of it. Right now, one of the things that we do is we list where we are in our work system, which. There we are, okay. Uh, and the graph before you real quick is our ABC, our blocks of our, of our work systems. Uh, Student Services lies in the C or the community side of this. That's where we work with our academic and our business services. The Student Services goal and overview is really, uh, the next part is really just to provide an overview and some of the goals and some of the responsibilities that we have in our department. Uh, but I want to start off with the Student Services mission. It's to provide knowledge, skills, leadership and effective processes to those serving our students so that all learners can find success in a safe and caring environment. Next on the screen for you is areas of oversight. So I've explained to you what our mission is in Student Services. The areas of oversight that we see out of our department is outlined in that Tier One, Tier Two. That's the model that we talk about in Pupil Services, which I am a part of, or our department is a part of. Tier One, related to that, we oversee Behavior Coaches, Discipline Processes District-wide, the Oveius Bully Prevention Program, that does include the Peaceful School Bus as well. Counseling Services and Threat Assessments. For the Tier Two A portion of our, of our systems, I oversee Student 504 Plan Management and also Counseling Services embedded in Tier Two A. Last on the list is other related programs that we run out of my office, or excuse me, Student Services offices. Uh, that would be, I'm the Summer School Coordinator. This will be my first year running summer schools, so I'm super excited about that, working with a great team. We have really great plans for this year. We're breaking all sorts of records for student enrollment. I think right now we are at about eight hundred and sixty K eight and about two hundred and fifty at the high schools. So we're over a thousand students in our, in our summer school program right now. I'm also coordinating with the residency requirements for the district, implementing board policy with that. I'm also the Federal Title IX Coordinator. That's a new position for all districts in the, in, in the country where we work with Title IX, which is separate than what Mr. Middleton does. A-plus programming, I work with that with Bev Heartland in the Administration of Platte County High School, along with the Counseling Department to facilitate that A-plus program. Co-curricular programming. I also oversee Crisis Prevention Institute or CPI Coordination. That's our student restraint, de-escalation and restraint processes. Uh, I work with the training of the staff, we work with our facilitators to implement that each year. And then also planners, handbooks. I work with those on facilitating those and updating those each year. Next. I'm going to let Andy drive the ship on this one. Okay, I'll give you the beat. Um, okay, the collaborators, the people that we work with out of our department is Pupil Services, which is represented here by Dr. Butel, Schools Counseling Teams, that's district-wide. Also our Northland Career Center as well. Behavior Coaches, Academic Services Team or AST, which many are in the room this evening. And also our Admin Council, which is our administrative team across the district. Those are the people that with this department really collaborates with. One of the opportunities about this department, it truly is a servant leadership position. So we're really excited about that. Our focuses are really tied around creating effective processes to ensure organizational alignment and positive stakeholder experience. We also want to ensure high-quality and engaging opportunities for students. That's, that is through academics, that's through our extracurricular, our co- That's, that is, um, through academics, that's through our extracurricular, our co-curricular, um, those pieces as well, also some, uh, Northland Career Center as well. And I want to increase, or we, our, one of our focuses is also to increase organizational program capacity and also capability of stakeholders and our processes within those. We have two sets of, uh, we have an internal customers that we work with and externals. Internals, obviously, listed before you, that would include teachers, any support staff, that includes bus drivers, custodians, anybody in between, behavior coaches, counselors, and the administrative team, district-wide. Our external focus truly is being a Student Service Department, our, our students and our parents. Some of the things that we're working on, um, related to, uh, Student Services, our goals align to the district in this way. Uh, we want to make sure that our Student Service Program is, uh, represents the Platte County School District, will provide each student with a relevant education in a safe and caring environment. We have two objectives related to that, Objective C one-one. That's my world. Annually improve student perception of a safe and caring environment as measured by an annual student survey. And my colleague here, Mr. Middleton, uh, his world would really, uh, align to Objective C one-two. Annually improve student perception, providing an engaging, relevant educational extracurricular opportunities to meet their individual needs, as measured by the annual survey. I want to turn this over to Mr. Middleton, because he's gonna talk about some of the goals, some of the activities that you're doing in that program, um, relative to, uh, our athletics and extracurricular.
Thank you, Dr. Sayer. And I believe you all have a copy of our, uh, Extracurricular Program Evaluation that, that Dr. Harris and I have, have went through. That's basically a collection of, um, we, you know, we have a group of extracro- co- and extracurricular activities team, that is basically comprised of head coaches and sponsors throughout some of our buildings that, that work together to create these goals, along with Dr. Harris and myself. So, um, I'll highlight some of the goals that, that we had for this school year. Goal number one, to provide opportunities for students to develop leadership skills, assume responsibilities, display sportsmanship, and learn to work as a team, as a member of a team. And actually, one of the, the objectives that, that we normally do this year was actually, um, canceled due to COVID. But, you know, we take a group of kids and, and coaches and sponsors to the, to the Misha Sportsmanship Summit every year. Um, so I'm looking forward to, to getting that back going on once we are back to normal and we can attend that again, so. Um, goal number two, to foster academic growth with the co-extracurricular activity programs. Um, and basically that objective is to achieve a combined three-point-oh GPA or better for students within each program. And, and this is pretty consistent every year that we see our students that are involved in our extracurricular act, and co-curricular activities, perform at a higher level in the classroom as well. And this year was no different, with actually a, a three-point-five-seven GPA of those kids in those activities, um, compared to a three-point-one-four GPA of students who aren't in activities. So we're very proud of that, and, and that's something our coaches talk about with our, to our kids all the time. And I do want to point out, you know, we, we've had some very successful teams this year, as you all know. Um, and the volleyball team in particular, we know that they finished third in the state this year. Those girls actually finished the year with a three-point-nine GPA, an average GPA. So again, just proves to us that, that, you know, their work in the classroom just correlates to what they do on the, on the field or on the court, or, uh, or whatever else they're doing. Goal number three, uh, to provide participation opportunities for students. And basically the objective there is something that, i- it's more of a work in progress. We are currently evaluating our, our middle school intermural programs, and Dr. Harris and myself, with the, with the, uh, middle school administrators, are basically trying to create a, a vision for that going forward with what we want those, those after-school activities to be, where they, where we can almost shift them from not a, not an athletic team that, that people come and compete on, but a variety of different, you know, clubs or activities, as some athletic, some non-athletic, that, that more of our students can benefit from. So that's something, we, we've started those initial conversations, and we're, and we're excited about that going forward. So those are the goals, and I will highlight some of the, I guess, the improvement actions that we have completed this year. Um, and if you've been in the high school this year, you, you've seen that Dr. Jones has done a lot of, um, redecorating, I guess, and rebranding. And, and part of that was, was he got me involved with, um, creating and, and some, basically some highlights to our athletics and activities. And right outside my office is a new Athletic Bulletin Board that is, that highlights our students and their successes, and, and, and a next-level Pirates wall, that I call it, where basically I take any kid who is a former pirate, who is, you know, competing, or, um, you know, participating in activity or sport at the collegiate level, and we put their picture up there. And I, I haven't been able to contact every kid, but I think currently we have over seventy kids who are competing at the collegiate level, and, and I will do a good job of getting, you know, these seniors, you know, in the future, so we can continue to, to grow that wall. So that's something very, very cool that's going on at the high school. Um, we, you know, we've, I worked with Dr. Harris to create a new, uh, basically annual program review with the head coaches, and we're, we're going through those right now. And, and part of that work is also, you know, impacting what you guys are seeing here, so. Um, you can go on the next slide there, Andy. And again, one of our, one of our focuses this year is to just recognize our, our staff and our, and our students that are participating in these activities. You know, one thing we've, that Dr. Jones has allowed me to do at some PLC meetings is basically recognize a coaching staff of the season. So we were able to do that with our volleyball coaches in the fall, some of you were there. Um, and then our swim coaches from the winter, and then we'll do that again. And I'll probably have to send out a virtual, you know, recognition of our spring coaches, since, uh, we may be competing after school's out, hopefully so. Anyways, I think there'll be a time for questions later, but if anyone has any, I'll be happy to answer at this time. Well, I will turn it back over to Dr. Sayer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Now, you can see kind of how those programs sit under Student Services, where we talk about those safe and caring and that experience that we want our Platte County Pirates to have. While he's talking about the athletic, um, and activity side, I want to dive into a couple of the specific programs that, uh, I mentioned under our service, under my department, would be, um, School Counseling. Some of the process and improvement actions that we've started this year that will continue into next year is we use the American School Counseling Association, or ASCA's University, for specific training. And I've listed those topics for you, what we focused on this year. Trauma and crisis, anxiety and stress, cultural competency, college admission, legal and ethical issues related to school counseling, and assisting students with special needs. That is a curriculum-based program, it's delivered virtually online, um, but it's a nationwide university specifically designed for school counseling. It's something that we have access to, we're really excited for that opportunity to be trained. That'll be the second year we participate in that. We also talk about Five Oh Four Case Management Training and Support. Uh, that came through our SWOT analysis, talking with the counselors on things that we need to improve, uh, in that, uh, program. So we're gonna work on that moving into next year. But our, one of our big pushes is an alignment to the Missouri Comprehensive School Counseling Program. If you're not familiar with that, there's really three pillars to it. Social-emotional development, academic development, and career development. And that's kind of the three pillars that hold that framework up. And you can see how those pieces are very important to that successful experience in all our students, that is the mission of what we're doing in Student Services. So we're really excited about those pieces, but something you're not gonna see on that slide that I have to give counselors credit for. I'm telling you, at the beginning of the year, we're sitting as a team, and we're building out our plans for this year, and we really had a, a really deep conversation on how do we be the best counselors to serve our students, our families, and our teachers in a virtual world? That was a really tough pivot. Um, when I say tough, it was a challenge, uh, we had a lot of discussion on it. I will tell you, a lot of that ASCA information, they actually put out a, here's a quick pivot for counselors in this new environment. And this team was really quick and savvy to respond to those needs. Um, and that was with, again, um, we knew it was heading into this, uh, into summer, into the fall, but they really just came out right before school started with these recommendations. So this team really stepped up and did some really, really hard work. So I cannot, uh, leave that, uh, out there, not on that slide. Next up, we talk about Behavior Coaches in our department. Um, Process Improvement Actions that we started and will continue for next year is looking at our grant that we got a couple of years ago through Safe in Schools Training. Um, that provided a lot of resources and a foundation to work through, um, that we worked on this year. Next year, we're gonna deploy, develop and deploy Tier One Behavioral Expectations for Classrooms. Um, we're also gonna explore and develop Tier Two A Behavior Supports and Interventions with small groups, and then continue integration of support into Student Success Teams. And, and that's, um, those are integrated practices in our, um, tier approach to help sure that we're meeting kids at all the different levels that need support. Again, for this group, this was a brand-new program we brought in this year. Pre-COVID, this was a turner, determination based on our data that we were gonna bring into the district. Can you imagine bringing three? Uh, one was an existing, uh, staff member in the district, but two were brand-new to Platte County, and trying to develop a new program at the start of a pandemic. Again, this team really stepped up, and really stepped forward and said, we really are gonna commit to these kids, serving them where their needs. And we, we had a little bumps, uh, beginning, because it was just all hands on deck. And I will tell you, this team really has stepped up, and as the year flowed through with this team, uh, we really, really hit stride on meeting those needs and coaching those teachers on how to best needs, meet the needs of those kids. We're gonna talk a little bit about more specific down the road in a couple of slides, on what we're gonna do. About as far as our workforce focus, these are the people that we, that, um, our department works with. One of the things that we're gonna work on with the School Counseling Team, I really want to point out those four bullet points for you. We talked about the Missouri Com- Comprehensive Counseling Program. Those are the pillars inside of that, that really solid programs have. School Counseling Curriculum, we're gonna have individual student planning, responsive services, and Systems of Support. What do they need to make sure they accomplish that? They need ongoing support, professional development, and processes developed to execute and evaluate their work. That is the gold standard of a, of a comprehensive program. Those are the pillars that we're gonna work through, that we started in the past, and we're gonna continue to work for, um, going into next year. Our Behavior Coaches is another framework we're gonna use. We talked about establishing Tier One Classroom Expectations. Well, you need a framework to roll that through. This is through our Beha- our Safe and Civil Schools Grant that we got through the state. We're gonna use the Stoic structure and framework to build these out. Stoic represents basically five things. Structure, you gotta have that structure for those classrooms. Then you gotta teach the behaviors that you wanna see. A lot of students might not know those things when they come to school. You can't just expect them to show up with it, they need to be taught those things. So we need to make sure we have processes to do that and resources. We're gonna observe and monitor, make sure we're understanding our interventions that we're doing and our processes and our expectations are being met, but how are the students? And how can we coach those teachers to respond to those changes that we need? We're gonna interact positively. And what that means is, you not only need to focus on the corrective behavior, but you also need to acknowledge what they're doing great at the individual, the classroom, and at the building level. So that really talks about our PBIS systems. And the last thing, correct fluently, that's kind of a fancy word for saying, know that student. Know that student. If you have a student acting out in your class, and you're going through a coaching cycle with the teacher, they might be acting out in class and being distracted, but the root cause of that might be they, they're a struggling reader. You gotta make sure you, you're correcting that fluency. You might not, you might wanna address the behavior, but you also have to get to the root cause. You have to understand that student's issue, so you can address it at the core level. So that's the framework we're gonna use next year to start building that Tier One Classroom Expectation. Here are our results for this year. Um, we're really proud of some of these things, but these are, um, some basic information that I wanted to share with you. Our current, and I think we pulled this, Andy, last week, a couple of weeks ago, our current attendance data this year is at the top. We're at ninety-two point three-nine percent for ninety by ninety. What that represents is, the state expectation is ninety percent of your students are attending ninety percent of the time. That's that ninety-ninety. Right now, we're at ninety-two student, ninety-two percent of our students are meeting that objective. Then we have current year attendance. If you took the ninety by ninety and just looked at raw attendance, we are at ninety-six point two-two attendance rate for the district. I put, um, it out by building, um, from, uh, previous years. We don't have this year's yet, obviously, school has not ended. Uh, but we will be updating that as soon as that information is available. Discipline data for the year. Um, I want to, before we jump into that, I want to make sure that I, I, I recognize that we need to interpret this information with caution. Um, this was not a normal year. Uh, we all know that, and it's showing up in the data that we collect, okay? So basically, you can see the top ten incidents in our system that we, uh, have discipline around. You can look at the top two categories, and I will tell you, you can, you can see why our Student Service Department and our Behavior Coaches, and we're working on that Tier One Classroom Expectation, because we need to make sure that our students, as we're, um, coming, um, back to school, and those students that are transitioning back, that they know what those expectations are, and that we make sure we teach them. And so we're really gonna start tackling some of those pieces. The next slide? This is a really interesting one. You will never see data like this again, um, because this is our, this is our frequency of discipline incidents by month. In my entire career, I've never seen it that low before. Um, the reason why is, we did not have all our students here. So this is where I talk about interpreting data with caution. You can see typically October and December, we would see spikes. You can see a little bit one of it in October, not so much one, you can see a trend coming out of December. But you can tell when we brought students back full-time, the data increased. That was expected. So please interpret this, uh, this with caution, but, but, um, that will look different next year, and we'll be able to kind of calibrate that a little more. Here's the results. Remember, one of our key ways we're measuring this is through our student surveys. And we ask all our students at the secondary level, if I have a problem, there are adults in this school that will listen and help. You can see the data in front of you for twenty-twenty-one. The gold standard for that is, if you have a, um, a Survey Performance Index of a four-hundred and above, that's a really, that's a good trend, that's a good data piece that you can see. Uh, we have, we've met that with our secondary students. But I want to also, um, highlight something as well. In a pandemic year, I'm very proud of this data, because what our secondary students are saying is, by, this was a good year to make sure kids felt, um, that there were adults to listen and help. And our students told us, at a record high, that yes, they did. I would also say, if you take a look at the data, we are moving students from the bottom and the neutral level to the top. That means you're also trending in the right way. So that's a really good piece of, of information. Again, I interpret it with caution, but it's trending in the right way. Next one is our elementary students, same question. You can take a look at the information there, I, I've kind of explained it upfront. But our four, I, now, um, elementary students, I think Dr. Brown, once I heard him in a presentation, they're, you know, they, they love coming to school, they love being there, they really wanna be there. We do see, obviously, higher numbers on these surveys with our elementary, that is totally normal. Safe and caring, teachers treat me with respect. Again, uh, we're, we've hit that four-hundred performance. We know there's areas of improvement in this, but again, we're moving students from those bottom percentiles and neutrals into the positive, and that means we're, we're trending in the right ways. Going down to the elementary, same question, treat me with respect. You can see very large numbers, positive experience for our students. They're saying that teachers treat me with respect. Teachers in my school care about me. This is something very important to me, um, is having students in the district. How much do they feel like they're cared for? We, uh, we've seen good results there. Again, we, we started low, we wanted to see that increase, we're trending in the right way. We know there's areas of improvement in there, but we're, again, we're moving the needle in the right direction. Elementary, same question. You can certainly look at that information. Secondary students, I know someone will help me if I am bullied at school. Um, for the first time, um, since twenty sixteen-seventeen, um, we've met that four-hundred threshold on our Survey Performance Index. Um, again, we're see, uh, we do have room for improvement there. Um, that ten percent in the bottom, uh, you know, percentile, we know we have work to do there. Elementary, again, a little bit lower, a little higher on the, the top-level percentage, but again, we're meeting that four-hundred mark, letting us know we're trending in the right way. Those are our safe and caring indicators. I want to shift to our College and Career Readiness Indicators. We have a couple of those that we monitor, and that's A-plus participation and knowledge about it. I understand the requirements and benefits of the A-plus program. This is our high school students only. High school students only. You can see the yeses and nos there. You can see the yeses and noes there. High school parents, we ask them the same question. That is, that's gone down a little bit. We've had more parent surveys this year, which is a good thing, but we know there's areas of improvement there. Getting that message out to parents, letting them understand and knowing their student can participate in that is the next part of that. Next slide up. Here's the actual evidence of that work. The first couple were knowledge and perception. This one's actual hard numbers. As of fall 2020, we get these numbers from the Missouri Community College Network. They have listed at fifty-four students participating this in the fall of 2020 at a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars' worth of scholarships. That is continuing to increase every year. That's a good thing you want to see. So while we do have some, some knowledge and some information, we're seeing more kids participate in the program as we go. So that's been a really highlight of that A-plus program, we're having more kids involved in that. Four-year graduation rate, you can look at that data. We are on trend, we have historically scored above, we are above the state average in our graduation years. Our trends really do align to the state. If we have a drop in a graduation rate, the state saw a drop in the graduation rate. Again, there's always work there. Until that's at one hundred percent, we're not going to stop. But the reality is, is that last year was a really tough year. You can tell that in the data, but I would also say the state was much lower than that. Again, that's not a, it's not an excuse, it's just, we look for those trends and we're, we're cycling where we should, where other districts are, but we've got some room to work on that. Secondary students, being able to establish career and educational goals, answering percentage of yes. I put that piece of data in there because I really want to speak to two things. That used to live in the counseling. In your counseling program eval, that was a counseling-specific question. What we, and I will tell you, the work through NCC and, and our focus on college, career, and military, that is everybody's job. That's not just the counseling position. That's not just the counseling department. So teachers have a role in that, administration has a role in that. You can see Dr. Jones, when he redid the high school, he has a whole college and career wing. That's that, that's that push that we're looking to see, making it part of what we do. College and career ready, student has established educational goal, career plans. You can see that, because, that data is interesting, and I want to make sure that we have those conversations starting in middle school. So it's really important to understand that they just don't end, or they just don't start and end at the high school, it starts well before they get to high school. Submitted for your review, again, are the three parts that Mr. Middleton and I submitted for you, the school counseling program eval, our A-plus program eval, and extracurricular and activities. At this time, we want to open it up for any questions that you may have about anything with student services, or anything that's in our athletics and extracurricular.
I think the numbers are very impressive, and the increases in the numbers have been extremely impressive. When it does come to the, the next-to-last slide, I believe, I've been encouraged to establish career educational goals at my school. It went down in fall 2020, and I know you talked about the establishing the wing and the high school to work on that. Are there any other goals that have been set to help work on that?
The college and career?
Mm-hmm.
I think a lot, yes, absolutely. And one thing I did fail to mention is, and Dr. Harris has really kind of led the charge on that, is as we designed that high school, you know, that's one of the limitations that we have, is that setting it up for a college and career push, where you have your, your wings of your career clusters. So it's not just one big long hallway, it's, hey, this is our STEM area, this is our engineering area. So building that out has been really, really an important part. I think having conversations, you talked about guidance curriculum, you saw that under the counseling department, that would be one of those places where we're talking with our young, that goes all the way down to elementary, where we talk about, who do you want to be and what do you want to be in this world? Talking about those, and then what does it take to get there? And that's that A-plus conversation. Are you aware that's a great avenue to get there? So we have some work in that area of making them knowledge, but also building our facilities and creating that culture of, this is something that we're important and we're pushing. So that starts through our counseling, through our, just our aesthetics, through, through working with our design teams. So there's some pieces that we're working forward to, but I will tell you, that has been a really big push in the last three to five years. But it's not just career. When we talk about career, again, it's that military piece as well.
I would also add that, and you'll hear more about this year, but we applied and were granted a Kaufman grant, a $75,000 grant, that really kind of feels like a real world dream. It's almost like perfect storms because of the work that we have with the new, the rebuild of the high school, and this grant, and the work that Dr. Jones is doing. You know, I think it's, I think you'll, you know, and we'll, we'll ask some of you to be a part of that as well. We're going to create a vision team, and that, that work will start next year, kind of like, what do we want our high school to look like, you know, five years from now, ten years from now? So we're excited about that.
Well, and I point that thing out, but I mean, other than that on this presentation, the numbers are great, which speaks to really all of you. So thank you.
And I want to give Dr. Jones another, another shout-out here from, from, from the podium, because, you know, bringing on that avid advancement via individual determination, that's something that we're, we're moving into the high school next year, that will really push that college and career focus. That's those soft skills, those, the, the coaching of the students, the individual attention that first-time college students need. I mean, that's what that program's all about. So it's, you know, once we get the fruits of this going, you're, you're going to see some real good traction with that.
But are you also pushing not just college, but what about those who don't, you know, just go straight into a career, welding, or whatever it may be, where they don't need a college education and not just, you know, also building on those?
Absolutely. Our partnerships with NCC has been very, very strong. We've worked with our Southern Regional Education Board grants to really build that career development, because I will tell you, you know, when I was in high school, it was all college, college, college. I will tell you, that is really changing. We use those three pillars, college, career, and military. Because we have, we know we have a large population, and that's a part of our community, is our military families. And so that is an extremely viable option as well. So honoring all three of those has been a shift that we made about three years ago, but we're going to continue that through some of these efforts moving forward. And I mean, that's for all students. You know, really all of our students, because we look through our, our special ed programs and how we're doing that transition from, you know, from a school setting to the life skills. So there's, there's, there's pieces across our organization that we're really trying to get them college and career and life-ready.
Our vision for the brand is employed, enlisted, and enrolled. So whatever a child, whatever a child wants to do, that, that's the possible child can achieve or, or, that's agreeable.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Equity and Inclusion Strategic Plan Update.
Well, Dr. Butel is pulling the presentation up, I'm just going to kick it off. I want to say first that what you're going to see in this strategic plan is the culmination of months?
Years.
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 Okay. A lo, a long time, and a lot of people have contributed to this strategic plan, and so I want to thank them for that, staff, students, and, and our parents. So a lot of work, we cast a very wide net to capture the voice of our community, and this is what we came up with from that. So obviously, this plan will provide the structure and focus needed for us to be laser-sharp and, and guide our efforts so that we can do this important work. Without a plan, we're just doing, we're all over the place. So, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brown.
Yes, thank you. Actually, my, my role this evening is pretty simple, is just kind of give you some context around, around how we got to this point. So about four years ago, it was actually Rob and I created a, a task force. And we, we, you know, our, our goal was really to just kind of build awareness, and it was all, it was all voluntary, it was after school. And we did things like, we looked at data, we did some, we, we did a book study, we did some things like that, but, and, and it was great. And we still have, some of the members that were on that task force are on our committee now. But we just felt like we weren't really, like, moving where we needed to go. And so at that point, we, we just, we decided to create a committee. And right around the time where we created the committee, as you all know, we had some very high-profile incidents happen in, in the district. So it actually looked like we just started the committee based on the high-profile incidents. That's actually, that's actually not accurate. We were trying to do some work well be, well before those, but the committee kind of helped us speed, you know, speed up what, what we were doing. And it was, when those high-profile incidents happened, our committee work really got intense. And, and it was good, it was a good intense, it wasn't, and, and so there was, you know, we started to have some movement. We broke our committee up into three groups, staff, students, and community. And, and from there, we kind of had champions of, of those. We also, Dr. Reich, Dr. Gardner, Dr. Butel, and myself met. I would say it was about twenty-five to thirty students at the high school to talk about their experience. Most of these students were, were minority students, and we met with them for about an hour and a half. And I will tell you, we got some of the most valuable information to guide our work than, out of anything that we've done so far. Those children did awesome, explaining a lot of things to us. We learned a lot through, through that. So we, 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 we did that with students. Then we knew we need to get parents involved. So through the community team, we got a parent advisory. Well, right when we got the parent advisory going, well, guess what happens? Pandemic hits. So like, one of our first meetings that we had with parents, we had to cancel, because it was right, right in the throes of, of what was happening. But we didn't let it deter us, we kept going, we got a little bit more familiar with Zoom and all these Google meets and things like that, and we decided to meet with parents on Zoom calls. And we also partnered with Sophix Solutions to help us guide our work with the parents. And I will tell you, I, I'm a little biased, but I thought the parent advisories this year were awesome. We, we, we were able to do some, we, we got really good with Zoom, where we could have breakout sessions with smaller groups of parents, and Dr. Butel just did an amazing job facilitating those. So we got information from parents, we got information from students, and then we took that back to our committee. And with all this information, we now have, we're, we're now in a place to present our, our plan to you. And, and before I, I turn it over to Dr. Butel, I need to tell you what a, what a great job she's doing of facilitating this. I would not want anyone else leading us in this work. Her passion is second to none, and she, she is going to do great things with this strategic plan and the groups that we have going, and we're going to help her. This is not, this is not just, hey, Jen, go do it. This is going to have to be the work of everybody in the room. And, but I wouldn't want anybody else leading us in, in that work. So she, she's done an amazing job, and we're, we're going to keep getting even better. So that's really kind of the, my part of tonight's presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Jen. I actually was supposed to link our mission to this, I apologize, which is easy to do, because when you look at this document, the word, there are words on here that are, that are very important, and it's meaningful experience, and it's safe and caring. Our children cannot have individual success unless they feel like their experience is relevant to them, or to him or her, and that it is a safe and caring place for them to attend. If we don't have those, kids will not have success. We have to have those. And so when you look at our mission for equity and inclusion, it is, it is all about that meaningful experience. That's the connection. That's the connection with this document and, and what we're doing. So I did accomplish my goals.
Good job. Thank you.
I'm going to give that to you.
Is this not working?
I don't believe it is. You got it?
Okay. Well, actually, this is where I wanted to go, I think. Wait. Oh, sorry. This way? This way. The other piece that's really important when it comes to our strategic plan on a page for the district is our principles of learning. In order for us to be able to achieve our principles of learning, we have to understand and know our learners. And our learners come from a wide variety of contexts. And so part of this plan is leveraging our knowledge of our students, deepening our relationships with students, so that we can actually achieve the principles of learning. Sometimes it works. There we go. So as Dr. Brown said, this is just basically the history of our work. We made a shift from what we were calling our diversity staff committee to our equity and inclusion committee. And that shift was purposeful, and that happened this year. The shift occurred because diversity is a fact, and equity and inclusion are the choices we're making in order to leverage the gifts of our diversity. So as Dr. Brown alluded to, this is the current purpose statement for the committee, to ensure that culture of inclusion for all learners. And when we say learners, we mean our adults as well as our students, by continuously and thoughtfully improving our cultural competence and our responsiveness. In order for us to work together, it was really, really important that we had common definitions for things. I don't know how many conversations I've had related to diversity, to equity, to all of those things where we think we're saying the same thing, but we're not. So Sophix Solutions brought me and Stephen Eer here tonight as partners with us, did a really good job of making sure that we were defining things in the same way. So when we had these conversations, we were talking about the same thing. What this will lead to for us basically is an appendix for us. So we've defined culture of inclusion, that's a part of our purpose statement, we've defined that responsiveness piece. And as a part of our journey and our learning, I feel referenced back to that purpose statement, it referenced cultural competence. The deeper we dig into this work, the more evident it is that it is completely impossible to be one hundred percent competent in someone else's culture outside of your own. So a shift that we're going to be talking about amongst our team is a shift from cultural competence to cultural humility, which is really that respectful attitude of understanding that different cultures bring gifts, and that they may challenge our biases, but we need to learn as much as we can to have that be an ongoing process. Some other items that we've defined, diversity is a really, really important piece. As Dr. Brown discussed, it looks from the outside that a lot of this work is race-based, right? Our har, har, high-profile incidences and all of that. But when we're talking about diversity, we're talking about the wide expanse of diversity. We're talking about diversity related to ability. We're talking about cognition, we're talking about identity, sexual identity, we're talking about race, we're talking about ethnicity, we're talking about the wide range of diversity. And it's really, really important that we keep that in our, our frontal lobe when we talk about this work, because it's really easy for each of us to come with an agenda of what we're, of how we're going to present things. We're going to talk a little bit here in a moment about the process that we went through in developing these, the plan, and really bringing the strategies to you. And this was brought out through feedback from our staff. When you talk about diversity, are you just talking about race, because that's all I'm seeing? So that was a really helpful piece of feedback. Our leadership structure is, is this. And this, this presentation, if you saw that very first slide, has been through multiple rinse cycles. At first development, and really, this is the culmination of, of several years' work, some of the strategies that were listed in this plan came from the task force that Dr. Brown and Dr. Gar, Dr. Gardner started, and there's basically a synthesis of the And there's basically a synthesis of this information. Quality Academy, our district-level administrators and building administrators, were the second rent cycle for this. We took it to our district team and to our parent advisory, and we've received student feedback as well. And then Sophic is listed as our partner because we've spent a lot of time talking about this. I wanted to talk just briefly about how we got feedback on this plan. I have a lot of really high-quality collaborative partners on our team. And one of the things I brought to some of the members of our team was how do we get feedback where we avoid what Dr. Casey calls hogs and logs? When you have conversations, folks who are passionate tend to be louder than folks who might have regular opinions, or it may be a personality trait. So it was really, really important for us to make sure that we had the opportunity to capture and value individual voice. So we created a feedback process. Our administrators went through this. Our parents went through this in the exact same way. And we captured individual voice feedback. We didn't have discussions. We captured that feedback individually. And I will say that I was incredibly humbled to be the person who received that feedback. I'm so proud of our administrators and their vulnerability, of our cabinet and their vulnerability, and of our parents and our community members who participated in that feedback cycle. Because I truly believe that the feedback that was received through this process, most of that wouldn't have been spoken. We're brave folks, but sometimes that's a really tough, a tough venue. So I'm really, I was honored to receive that. And that feedback led to significant changes in the plan. Some of the folks who've seen pieces of this multiple times, every time I put it up, there's a different strategy that came from that feedback. So that's how we went about gaining that, those changes. So I'm going to just walk you through what our student stakeholder focus looks like, so we know who we're talking about. It's just a simple pie chart for our staff demographics. This was from April 30th. And when you look at this, obviously, we're a predominantly white district. We do have about 8% of our students Hispanic, 8% Black. This information comes from our student information system. As families enroll, they check a box. Put that up against our staff demographics, 97% of our staff are white. And at the point of time for this, this was about, this was 400 and 4,275 kids. When we look at our demographics related to male, female, our students, our female student population is just under 50%, our male population just over 50%. But this is really interesting, not unexpected, but interesting. When it comes to our teaching staff, 77% of our teaching staff are female and 23% are male. So I think it's just really interesting to, to put those up against each other. And that was based on some feedback from one of you to include that into this today. With our demographics, we have certain programs that we're required to provide, what I call entitlement programs. So those are programs that folks qualify for, that have set criteria. Right now, our students who are eligible under IDEA, so special education, students that are educationally disabled, we're at 9.89% of our student population. Gifted services, this is only our elementary and middle students. 2.98% of those folks. Our English language learner population, this year especially, this number is to be interpreted with caution because this is, this has been a really transient year. But we're at, right now, as of the end of April, at 2.18%. And then free and reduced meals is at 22.57 for the district. That one also is interpret with caution because there really isn't a huge motivation to fill out a free or reduced lunch form because of the USDA providing free meals. I will say, based on our anecdotal data related to homelessness, related to assistance our social workers are providing with eviction stuff, rent assistance, and treasure chest, we're up. We're up in that area. From our student needs, student feedback sessions with Laura Hewlett and Mike Brown, from our conversation with high school students, Dr. Reich, Dr. Brown, Dr. Gardner and I, and from our surveys, these are the top needs that our students have been very clear in stating that they need. That sense of belonging, that safe and caring environment, educational relevance, access that's equitable, and then really just an increase in awareness, responsiveness, and inclusivity. So we're going to jump into the plan. As Dr. Reich alluded to, the purpose of this plan is to provide a guidance document under which strategies occurring at the building can be collected. So if you think about this plan in terms of an umbrella, this will ensure that all of the arrows under the umbrella are going in the same direction. So we're basically talking about two goals. The first goal, just for ease, I, I put as the culture, creating that culture of belonging. So what we need to do is to develop and refine processes that ensure that culture of belonging. And we're going to measure that with survey results and participation data. And the second one, second one is really about access, creating equity of access. Developing and refining processes that ensure that across schools and school-based activities. That's going to be really important here in a minute. Again, measuring with survey results, process fidelity checks, participation data, and performance data. So what we've done is we've developed a list of strategies per goal. These strategies come directly from the work of the parent advisory, Quality Academy, and the staff team. With the help of Sophic Solutions, we've gone through with all of those groups, including cabinet, a process that we call start, stop, continue. And the stuff that was continue and start is here. So Dr. Casey likes to say, you said, so we did. You said, put it on the plan, so we did. That's what we have here. So the first one is creating and refining student advocacy groups that support that voice. We have that at the high school. We have that with, every, every building has something a little bit different. And the elementaries are working on this. We have this with principals advisory at Berry. And with our elementaries being Leader in Me, there's a lot of talk in different element, in each of our elementary buildings about leveraging that group for student voice when it comes to issues related to, to equity and inclusion. Our feedback structure for parents, we really need to leverage that to support our efforts and to guide our efforts. Our parent advisory is a huge piece of that. But our parent advisory grew exponentially after a specific incident. And so we want to make sure that we have a balance of voice on our parent advisory. So one of the pieces that we'll be going through this, this summer will be a re-enrollment period. So it'll be a great time to join the team. We're going to be deploying some information about our plan and some information to our parents about what being on the parent advisory entails, when the meetings are, and what you're going to do. That feedback cycle, what's the purpose? And we're going to ask, cast a broad net and say, who wants to be a part of that? Then we're going to provide an orientation, and then we'll run it for the year. But we really want to have a balance of voice with relationship to that. Our discipline processes, as Dr. Sayer discussed, we need to really look at those, redevelop some of those and make sure that they're being deployed with some equity. There, there's some different metrics that you can use to look at that. But it's really important that we make sure that we have uniformity in terms of how we're approaching discipline. Creating a celebration and recognition events for various diverse groups. Last year was our first year, last school year, 2019, 2020, was our first year celebrating Black History Month district-wide. One of our staff members, Wayne Baskerville at PCMS, had done this for several years prior. He had done a bingo game, and we deployed that from our three-year-olds all the way up through our seniors with varying levels of technical questions when it comes to bingo. Replicated that this year and really looked to expand that. The high school has done some different things with, with relationship to celebration of different groups as well. But that's a part of getting to know each other better. And then exploring and refining when necessary activities and opportunities and extra and co-curricular activities that support equity and inclusion. That's a really long way to say that we need to look at barriers. We need to look at why kids aren't participating in certain things and what we need to do to eliminate or alleviate those barriers. Is it transportation? Is it that I don't think that that coach or that person gets me or understands me? Is it that I, that the language in which I'm receiving the notice for a specific club isn't language that I understand? So really exploring that and looking at that more deeply. Our second round of strategies, and these are not in a prioritized order, is really looking at our district-wide, leveraging our tradition of a district-wide community. We have risks when it comes to our community, and those are things that we really need to look at. So really looking at high school freshman orientation and other activities that really look at that healthy blend that happens. Dr. Hanniger, look at you guys. They're doing it right here. They're talking. These two have been collaborating a lot, talking about self-interaction at the high school level. Dr. Miller does the same thing with Dr. Jones. Really looking at how can we create that sense of community before kids at the high school? So that's a huge piece of that, really focusing on the freshman component with that as well. And then consistent activities that unite the district as a whole. I had never been anywhere that had homecoming the way we have homecoming. That's super cool. Another one of my favorites is happening tomorrow, which is the graduation walks. That is a community-wide celebration of our kids. And, and that's something that we really need to leverage and make sure people are aware of and use that as a point of celebration, bringing us together. Also with relationship to this is really what our parent communication looks like and what our parents understand when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. What do they know about our work with relationship to this? What do they know about our why? One of the feedback pieces was about preparing students for real-world application of skills. At the elementary level, this is leveraging the diversity and equity components in Leader in Me. At the middle school level, it's how character strong is, is interpreted. And at the high school level, avid fits 10,000% right into this. So you can kind of see how all these things fit together. And the last one is eliminating barriers to participation in key school experiences. Again, this is a direct, this action strategy is a direct component of conversations at the high school, conversations with parents about how do we ensure that all of our students have what I would call those milestone moments? How do we eliminate barriers so all of our kids have the opportunity to participate in things that make school, school? For some kids, it's going to the homecoming dance, but I might need additional support to be able to do that. For some kids, it might be going to a specific play, but I might need additional support or I might need transportation to be able to do that. So we really want to look more deeply with this. When we talk about this, this is a north-south component. This is an ability-disability component. This is a why do we have X amount of percent of our students who are one specific race, but they don't participate in any of these other activities? What, what's the why there? Dr. Sayer and I work very closely together. He's right across the hall from me. I yell out my door quite a bit. And when we talk about the data that you saw about how safe and cared for our kids feel, that's amazing data. His job's about leveraging, getting that up there, and my job is about who's not in that green. How do we, how do we make sure that we have more opportunity to talk about and look at the kids that haven't said, I feel safe and cared for? What are we doing there? No? Now it's your turn. Goal two, again, is that equity of access piece. Strategies related to goal two are really about how do we make sure that we, that things are accessible? We need to measure and maximize inclusion in some of our, what I would call more high-flyer programs, NCC, NCAP, AP, all the way down to NJHS and, and Delta. Are those accessible to all students? One of the things we know about IQ testing is IQ testing is not normed, generally speaking, on a diverse population. So what does that mean for us using IQ as a component of Delta testing? So those are things for us to look at when it comes to that. We also want to use the improvement team process, which is a process that Academic Services has trained and promoted folks in. And Dr. Casey used to be a trainer facilitator for that. And really, that process is about leveraging the knowledge of our teachers and how we meet the needs of our learners that are far from target, close to target, exceeding target when we're talking about our standards. We already have that process set up. What we want to do is infuse questions into that process related to social emotional learning for our students. In other words, we're addressing the standard. These are your activities that we'd like to use to address the standard. What are the identity implications for this? How do the resources represent or not represent the students that I'm teaching? How might my students, based on their life experience, react to this lesson the way I've designed it? And just being more reflective and thoughtful before we roll some of those pieces out. And really, not shying away from difficult conversations, but ensuring that we have gone through a process that helps us understand where those minefields might be so that we can plan, so that we can talk about providing context to our students so that they better understand. And then looking at that curriculum and resource audit to guide. The tools that we give our teachers, are those the best things for us to choose from as we move forward with learning with our students? We also are looking at our hiring processes. You can see clearly that our, that our staff doesn't represent our students. So how do we leverage our hiring practices and our connections? Dr. Gardner's been working on this for a while to increase that possibility of representation for our students. It's really powerful when you can say, I see myself in you when you're working with a teacher as a student. That's a really powerful statement. Our staff is really in need of professional development related to this topic. So I'm going to outline just a few things that we're looking at for that. When we started with our district-level team, one of the things that we realized early on is that we really needed to have a tool to help us understand our interactions with each other. So we adopted the courageous conversations compass. It's a compass that you can use to indicate why you're reacting to something in a certain way. Are you reacting emotionally? Are you reacting in an ethical way? There's a process to that. Dr. Jones has adopted that, and he uses that with some of his building, building leadership team and staff as well. And it's a tool that we can use to allow us to have those difficult conversations and take some of those edges off. When you recognize, I always say, if you can name it, you can tame it. If I know why I'm reacting in a certain way and I can center myself in that, I'm much more apt to be able to engage in it in a healthy conversation. In other words, it's okay for us to disagree. We just have to be able to do that with, with better skills. So that's a piece that we'll be talking through with staff. The other one is the IDI, the intercultural development inventory. Sophic Solutions is receiving training in this, and so will Dr. Brown and I. This is a tool that's about organizational growth as well as individual growth. So it's a, basically a test you take that tells you where you are on the continuum for all of these indicators related to diversity, in terms of unconscious bias and all those sorts of pieces. And then there's strategies assigned to that to help you move along that continuum. We'll use that tool for folks who want to engage with that for individual coaching. We'll also use that as a tool to give us a baseline for where we are as an organization and strategies that we can leverage to move ourselves forward. And that's an evidence-based tool. So we're going to be jumping on that pretty quickly here as well. And with collaboration with Sophic, we feel like we can really use that to its maximum extent. And then we're looking at cultural sensitivity professional development, really just increasing the capacity of our staff to be able to engage in those difficult conversations. One of the things that human beings do when they don't feel like they have the skill to engage is they become silent. And we want to make sure that silent is, silence is an agreement. But we also know that we need to maintain a neutral, a neutral forum. So we have to be able to facilitate conversations with students instead of just shutting them down. And the last one is probably one of the easiest ones for us to achieve in terms of a strategy, and that's translation services for key documents and communication. I think next month, you're going to get a whole stack of program evaluations from me. And one of the strengths that our English language teachers for our EL program have identified as a strength from this year is our use of a, of a tool called Alboom, which is real-time phone translation in 78 different languages. We also have the ability through Google to do some document translation pretty easily, too. So we want to make sure that we're maximizing that and we're making... and we're making our district, our district information, accessible to all of our families. So that's a huge piece with that. So the way we're going to display to you what this looks like is through a couple of different ways to show our results. We are looking at the development of the things below this bullet for an Equity and Inclusion dashboard. Our administrators gave great feedback in their Quality Academy session of saying, you know, we may want to display this data differently at the elementary level than the secondary level, because there's different data to look at. So I'm anticipating we will land with two Equity and Inclusion dashboards when it comes to looking at this. Our performance data is really huge when it comes to this, because there is a subgroup achievement gap. We know that our students with IEPs are not achieving at the same rate as our students without IEPs. We know our students who are of color are not achieving at the same rate as our students who are white. We need to look at that and we need to align strategies to that. We also need to look at our feedback results. Currently, our primary feedback sources are surveys, our listening tours, I think that what I call what Laura and Mike do, and our focus group pieces. We need to disaggregate that data. Right now, you see that data in aggregate. It looks great. The vast majority of our kids feel safe and cared for. But who doesn't? And how do we know who they are? So we need to look at that. I'll be working with Laura Hewlett on how to communicate the reason we want to disaggregate the data. We've never had, please tell us what your race is when you answer a question, right? The other piece to think about with this, when you think about, my teachers at school care for me. If I'm at elementary, generally speaking, third through fifth graders take that survey, I'm answering that based on my classroom teacher. But what if this other person doesn't care for me? How does, how does that come out? How do we know that? And at the high school level, I have seven teachers. So where does my score end up with that? So we want to look at some different ways to look at that, that data. So we'll be auditing our survey. We'll be talking about how to disaggregate our data related to our survey and really focusing on that sense of belonging. Is the, are your experiences relevant and engaging? And do your teacher, teachers care about you? For staff, we need to do the same. We need to ask them if they feel like they belong. We need to make sure that they feel safe and cared for. And do, do they have the tools that they need to handle these tough topics? And with our parents, we've never asked them if they feel like they belong. I think that's a really important question. So we need to look at that. And we need to know their feedback on if they think that the folks in the building care about their family and their student. Participation data will be disaggregated as well, across clubs, activities, athletics. Awards is a big one. And then all those AP college credit, all of that stuff as well. And then when it comes to our discipline data, we already alluded to the fact that we're going to be looking at that and really auditing those processes and the application of those processes. It's one thing to develop a process, but if you don't apply that process with fidelity, you're guaranteed not to have equity. So that's our last piece when it comes to that. So all of those strategies under those two goals are designed through a wide variety of feedback to help us achieve our vision, our mission, and our values. What questions might you have?
This is, by the way, this is first read tonight. We'll ask for board action.
Any questions? Discussion?
I would be happy to deploy my feedback form to you so that you can provide individual feedback if you would like. That's the same tool we've used for others. But if that's something you would like, I'd be happy to give you that, so that yours can be taken into that as well.
Senator Vicki.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative update.
I think I could do this in under an hour.
Please. I will insist.
It was actually a pretty relatively harmless session, session for schools. There was one little school reform bill that passed that we were disappointed about, but it has a very small in scope. Otherwise, we're just happy the legislative session is over. That's all I have.
Announcements and discussions, important dates. NCC graduation is Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the Hy-Vee Arena. PCHS graduation, Sunday at 3:00 p.m. at the Hy-Vee Arena. Memorial Day, no school, obviously. School, last day of school is Wednesday, May 26th. Is that correct? The CSDGKC Annual Membership Meeting, virtual, Wednesday, June 2nd at 6:00 p.m. First day of summer school, Thursday, June 3rd. Board of Education Retreat, Saturday, June 12th at 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. June Board of Education Meeting, Thursday, June 17th at 6:30. A reconvene from closed session beginning at approximately 5:30. MSBA Leadership Summit, Friday, June 18th and Saturday, June 19th at the University Plaza Hotel in Springfield. Last day of summer school, Wednesday, June 30th. MS, Misha Activities Dead Week, Saturday, July 3rd through Sunday, July 11th. And the July Board of Education Meeting will be held Thursday, July 15th. I think there is a full list of the school board meeting dates for 2021, 2022's school year attached also. Comments by board members and administration. I'll start, I think, since Laura sent her message. I don't know about the rest of you, but my phone just keeps buzzing. I would ask, I know some of you have gotten messages. This is not, you cannot wear masks. For anyone who's still listening, this is simply leaving it optional. It's for you to make a decision that's best for you and your families or your children. So do what works for you, but please do not judge others for their decisions or be mean to others for their decisions or do anything to harm one another for their decisions. It is simply a difference of opinion and it is okay to have a difference of opinions. Any other comments?
I want to thank the administration here. At Pathfinder, I had a good visit this afternoon in some kindergarten rooms and a first-grade room and got to visit Mrs. Wiley, probably for the last time. I'll visit her at her classroom as she's retiring. I just want to thank you folks for taking me around and for the tour and taking me places that I would see exactly what I came to see. It was a good afternoon.
Anybody else? All right. That's it. Is there a motion to adjourn? Still moved. Second?
Second.
Please go.